Okay, I'll call to order the Planning Commission meeting for May 23. Can we have the roll call, please?
Chair DeBolt.
Is that present?
Vice Chair Riley is absent. Commissioner Andrade.
Here.
Commissioner Quilty.
Here.
Commissioner Gross.
Here.
Commissioner Lowe, absent. And Commissioner Solvackanik.
Here.
We stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move to, well, first off, we have an introduction of Andy Perea. He's our interim committee development director. So, anyway, just like to welcome.
Hey, Chairman, members of the commission. Thank you, just realized today it's a month that I started with Los Alamos today. My first day was a month ago. I'm very happy to be here. I worked, I've got 32 years in planning, last 25 years with the city of Fountain Valley. I was with Fountain Valley for 25 years where I started as a planner and then planning manager and retired as a director. I retired two years, actually, almost three years ago. I've also worked for the city of Manhattan Beach, Hermosa Beach, and Monterey Park. And I live in South Orange County with my wife, two kids that are grown, college, done with college and are on their own, thank goodness. And I'm just happy to be here and I'm looking forward to working with you all.
Great. And just found out he likes to fish in Arizona, in the Payson-Muggion Rim area, which is where I'm planning on taking my grandson, because I used to fish there years ago.
I would say this.
Okay, at this time, we'll open the meeting for oral communications. At this time, anybody in the audience may address the Planning Commission and speak to any item that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. If you wish to speak on an item that is currently on the agenda, then you might want to wait until then, and then it would be probably better. So if anybody at this time would like to speak on something that's not on the agenda or just in general, now's the time. Okay, seeing none, close that portion of the meeting. Move on to approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of March 28. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any corrections, changes, or anything in there? I don't believe I have. Okay. All in favor? Do we need a roll call or is it all, just a voice vote? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None?
Abstained.
Abstention. Mr. Solvackanik. Okay. No consent calendar, no discussion. We'll move to the first item, which is consideration of an onsite beverage sales and consumption in the commercial CG zone. This is at 5008 Catava. We have a staff report, please.
I have to actually reduce myself.
Okay.
500 feet.
You are?
Yeah, that's the pot holder, right?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah. As a crow flies.
Oh, yeah, that's close enough.
So have fun.
All right.
Still a quorum, right? Yes. Okay.
Okay.
This is a consideration of alcoholic beverage sales and consumption at that building there, 5008 Catava Avenue, in the general commercial zone. And the applicant is with us here tonight, Joe Crosey. And he's the owner of the Pot Holder Cafe, which has other, this is his fourth location. He has other ones in Long Beach and so forth. And it's well-known there. The restaurant was, this restaurant was formerly Classic Burger, which has an outside seating area. And they plan on selling beer and wine-based drinks served at the breakfast and lunch times, not during dinner or after that. And the restaurant closes at 4:00 PM, so it's not an evening drinking crowd that will be there. And the, in the condition, I mean, there is a condition in the resolution saying that they will only be allowed to serve alcohol during those hours. And if they want to change it, they have to come to the Planning Commission again for that. So the dining, the outside dining area is 13 feet from a neighboring residential property, so that has to be mentioned. If the commissioners would like to see some type of separation or buffering of that that's different from what it is right now, then they can, I mean, you can ask for that. Let me show you. There it is. There's the outside seating area right there. And then the house is right there, so their back, their backyard ends right there. And in 2003 and in 2007, requests to serve alcohol at this location were denied based on neighborhood concerns. But what makes this different is because of the hours of the sales. It's not a bar that, it's not like other bars or whatever. But it, if they leave, the next people will also have the same restriction because it rides with the land that they can only be open till 4:00. So staff recommends approval of this resolution, 1809, unless other contrary information is received during the meeting. Back to you.
Are there any questions of staff at this point?
What's the wine-based drinks? Is that like margaritas?
I'll let them answer, because there's quite a few, actually.
Well, why don't we, why don't we go, go ahead and come on up. And we'll go ahead and, if you'd like to speak to what you're doing, and then you might want to stay there, we'll have questions maybe for you and the staff. We'll do it that way.
Okay. Thank you, counsel. The, it's a citrus-based, low proof vodka that our wine distributors will let us obtain with a beer and wine type 41 license. It's only 40 proof, so somehow you're able to get that beer and wine. And we just put that in a, two drinks only, we do Bloody Mary and Michelada, which is beer and, and mimosa. That's all we serve. There's no other type cocktails. All right. Any other questions on?
No.
On the other, oh, thank you.
Okay, so let's get the procedure down. I'll have the attorneys.
Yeah, through the chair, if I may have asked that you formally open the public hearing and then continue with any testimony you'd like to hear.
Oh, okay. All right, so I'll go ahead and open the meeting at this time for the procedure here. And we'll continue, we may have questions as we, as we go along, so. From there. Okay, so any other questions? Any other comments, Victor?
Not for the applicant, no.
Okay.
I do have a question for staff or counsel when we're ready.
Okay, all right. Okay, well, I'll, should I, should I close the public hearing, then take it, bring it back?
Is anybody to speak on the item?
Yeah, is there, okay. Is there anybody here wishing to speak on this item regarding the alcohol sales at the Pot Holder Restaurant?
Do you want the applicant to come up and talk about this restaurant?
No, I don't think so. I think we're okay at this moment. Okay, I'll go ahead and then, seeing that, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission.
Yeah, my question is either for staff or counsel. If, if this is approved for the consumption of alcohol outside, outside the location, it runs with the land, so any future similar uses on, they would have that right. Would they also be restricted by any limitations we put on there, that being hours of operation? And so the use of alcohol would run with the land, but would the restrictions also run with the land?
Go ahead. Yeah, any conditions that you impose on the CUP would also run with the land? So if a new owner were to take possession of the property and want to continue to operate, but under different conditions, they would need to come back and seek an amendment to the CUP conditions?
So there could not be any consumption after 4:00 or whatever the limit is?
Correct. Yeah, that's what we've written in there.
All right. Anybody else?
Has anybody complained in the neighborhood about noise from previous businesses in there?
Not since I've been here at the city, so, yeah. People have complained about, you know, starting gates. But that kind of goes without.
That's a little further over, huh?
Yeah.
What is the separation wall? I forgot. That's between the, is it the building? And then what's on the patio end? I know you had the street, yeah.
Right here, it's a wall that's about four and a half feet tall.
It's a brick wall.
Yeah.
There's raw iron on the top.
Right. And then I think the, the residential fence is about five feet tall, because you can actually stand there and look over it.
Okay. All right.
The previous establishment was open till 9:00 PM, so they didn't serve alcohol, but the neighbors are pleased that we're not there at night. And we have where the plants grow on that side.
Right.
They can grow as high as the fence to also buffer any sound. And we've got our hands real nice, guys. We're not there at night anymore.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments?
Good.
Somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No? Okay, that motion carries. Congratulations and wish you well. I'd be there sooner, except can't get past the lines yet. Okay. Okay. Next item. We'll have our items. Okay, moving on, this will be item 9B. This is an, this is a, for a conditional use permit for a massage establishment at 10775 Los Alamos Boulevard. Can we have a staff report, please?
Chair DeBolt and members of the Planning Commission, this one is also pictured on the screen in front of you there. It's at 10775 Los Alamos Boulevard, and it would be on the second floor on this end, right there, in that section of the building. The applicant is here with us tonight. It's Carlita Johnson, she's there, and her father is with her as well. Ms. Johnson filed an application to operate a massage establishment on the second story of an existing two-story retail building that has Los Alamos optometry on the bottom floor. To open a massage business, applicant must submit an application for a conditional use permit, which she's done for tonight. And then should you guys approve it, then she'll be required to submit an application for a massage establishment operator's license with the police department. That doesn't mean that she'll go through a background check with them. They, she has a CAMTC certificate and card that says that she has passed background check and criminal background check at the state with the CAMTC board. They do that. And the application being considered tonight is for the use, and whether it's appropriate and compatible and harmonious with this proposed site before you. This does mean that if she ever closes shop, there would be, someone else could take it over as a massage establishment as well. And staff recommends approving the CUP based on the understanding that, you know, that it does meet code, and she's, she's met all the requirements that are required of our code, so we recommend approval.
All right. And do we have any questions of staff at this?
I do.
Go ahead.
On the establishment, how does it work for chiropractors to potentially come in under their license, do you know?
Yeah, chiropractors are permitted use, and chiropractors can also have masseuses that work for them without going through any of these background checks, other than the CAMTC. They need that. But they, you know, chiropractor's an easier use to get into a place.
Yeah, and they can slide in under a massage license, too. Can we restrict that from them bringing in chiropractors?
We would have to change the zoning code to make it a CUP for chiropractors or something like that. It's, right now, it's permitted.
For what it, what they're applying for?
For chiropractors. For them, it's a CUP.
CUP. So they could basically have both in that area?
Correct.
You have one next to us.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
So do we, can we put something in here potentially to kind of hold back and not allow chiropractors in the massage parlor, or not?
If the chiropractic uses are permitted by right under the zoning code, you would not be able to impose a condition that would restrict a chiropractic office from going in.
All right. Any other questions?
I don't know if you're.
Of staff? Questions of staff?
Well, yeah, you may or may not, they may have to answer the question, but.
We'll bring them up in a second.
Yeah, I'm just not sure if, they might already know that's the question. It just said in the, in the information here that it will be staffed by professional and licensed estheticians, massage therapists, and other licensed professionals.
Correct, yeah.
But, and then also it says that in the beginning, she'll be running it, and then they'll add as, as needed.
Right.
And I just wanted, I didn't see if there was anything listed as license, that she had a license currently. Yeah, I don't know.
She, she does. She, well, she doesn't have a license with the city. She has a CAMTC certificate at the state, which.
Right. Okay, so that's a certification for massage.
Right. And a background check and a criminal.
I wasn't sure if that was just the background check or if that was actually a certification.
Yeah, it's a background check as well, though, but, yeah.
And I, go ahead.
That's through the consumer affairs, correct?
No, it's, it's its own board.
Its own board?
Yeah.
Okay.
The California Association of Marriage, I mean, not marriage. Yeah, Massage Therapists Council, yeah.
A lot of them come up under that, no matter what you do.
All right. Okay. I have a question. Yeah, okay, explain a little bit about the certification and the background. So there's going to be an additional vetting by our police department?
Minor. We're not, we're not allowed to go beyond what they've done at the state already.
If I could.
Go ahead, go ahead.
If I may jump in on that a bit. So, so we're really talking about two approvals that are required for a massage establishment. Before you tonight is the CUP, which is primarily a land use determination. Our municipal code also includes a separate regulatory chapter that addresses the operation of massage establishments. An individual who's CAMTC certified would not be required to get a live scan and a background check through our police department. But there are additional inquiries that the PD will be looking at in whether, in determining whether or not to grant the operator's permit.
Okay.
So, for example, if an operator had in the past operated another establishment where a permit was revoked, that may serve as grounds for denying an application in this city.
Right.
So, so there is some level of inquiry. And then also of note is that that regulatory chapter imposes operational conditions and standards of conduct and so forth, which, if you have an operator who violates our municipal code regulations, it's a basis for revocation of their license. So the CUP would run for the land, but as to the individual operator, anyone operating in that space is required to have our regulatory permit, and that permit can be revoked if there were ever conduct that warranted a revocation.
Okay. So we're looking here tonight just at the, at the use and how it applies to the zone and.
That's correct.
Okay.
And the regulatory permit is reviewed by PD and approved by the chief.
All right.
Chairman, if I can add, the CAMTC also has an online website. We can check the licenses of potential operators.
Yeah.
And Ms. Johnson does have a current active license, which will expire in March of 2020.
Okay, great.
And you have copies of that in front of you, so.
Okay. Any other questions or, to staff, I'm going to open it to the.
Just a comment. There's numerous letters from the public in support of the applicant, and we received one, it was in our staff report, and we received one this evening with, with a nod favorable, not, not to the applicant, but against the establishment. Is this going to be made part of the record also?
Yes.
As soon as the public hearing is open, I'll just read that in.
All right, great.
Thank you.
All right. So at this time, I'll open the public hearing and ask the applicant if she would like to come up and tell us a little bit about what you do and.
Good evening. My name is Carlita Johnson. I also go by CJ. I'm here to seek approval for a CUP to operate a first-class spa at 10775 Los Alamos Boulevard. The spa will initially have services of facials, massage therapy, body wraps, detoxing body wraps, quiet room, meditation, and yoga services. And additional services will be added as, as we expand to include nutritional counseling and sound therapy. We anticipate a relatively fast startup. I will be paying for top-notch ranking with Google AdWords to guide our clients to the website. I will be networking senior living communities, seek out radio programs and online programs for marketing. And I would like to also participate in cross-marketing with other local businesses as well. I know that there was a question of the vetting of potential employees. They will be vetted through me as well. I have a very high standard of, and a high work ethic, and I'll, and expect that of whomever works at the spa. So our estheticians and our massage therapists will be strongly vetted. They'll be licensed, they'll have experience, they'll come with very high recommendations as the spa's going to represent me, so I want to have the best quality staff working for me. The spa will be a relaxing and peaceful environment. Our facials, our body wraps, our quiet room, yoga services are designed just to do that, just to give you a very relaxing overall experience. While our massage therapist will be traditional in the sense, there will be some emphasis on muscular skeletal pain management treatments as well. So in that sense, that's where I will also be working with physicians and doctors who feel that their client, or their patients would strongly benefit from massage therapy. We will operate in a totally professional and upscale manner. The decor of the spa will be upscale and very professional and warm and welcoming. And it's designed to give you just a overall holistic experience. So I welcome any questions you guys might have.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any questions of the applicant? No?
I have a couple. What percentage would you say is massage versus the esthetician part of it?
I imagine that it'll be, I'd say probably 50% massage and 60% massage, sorry, and maybe 25 to 40% facials.
Okay. And what's the name of it?
Melt Massage and Spa.
Thank you.
I have just, just a couple of questions. It seems like you're going to have a lot of activity there, but it's, from what we see here, or I see here, it's 480 square feet.
Yes.
So do you anticipate right out of the, at the start, that you're going to be staffing it fully?
Not initially, no.
Okay.
No. Those services will be added on as the business grows.
And then are you, are you going to be there operating the?
Yes, I will.
So you will be on-site all the time and?
All the time.
I got you, okay.
Yes.
And then, in reading the, the letters of support for it, which were very good, and I get, I got the impression that, that this is your first ownership?
Yes.
Of an establishment?
Yes.
Your first, okay, so this is your first, you've always worked for somebody else and now you're?
Yes.
You're going on your own. Okay, great. Okay, that's, that's good. Okay. I have no questions at this time. I, thank you. And then I'll just ask, is there anybody else who wishes to comment on this? It's a public hearing. If there's anybody else here that wishes to address the commission on this item?
Chairman?
Okay.
After the packet went out, we did receive a letter from Mr. and Mrs. Davis on Catalina Street opposed the proposal before you this evening.
All right. So we'll go ahead and insert that into the record and.
He's got it.
Okay. So I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for further discussion.
I have no, no comments.
Comments?
The CUP runs with the land. Is there a time limit on that to where they would have to come back at some point and reapply for a CUP? Or how does, how would that work exactly?
The CUP could be brought back if there is ever an action to revoke it.
I saw that.
There could be a need to come back if they change their operations in any substantive form that requires an amendment. And then the CUP could potentially lapse if the use were abandoned for a specified period of time. But generally speaking, it's something that attaches to the land and will not require any sort of periodic review or update by the Planning Commission.
So they, for whatever reason, sell, decide, go out of business, whatever, for whatever reason, they leave the premise, and somebody else comes in, there obviously is no need for them to come back to us to start up another business that would fall under, quote, massage?
That, that's correct. However, the new business, again, would be required to obtain the regulatory permit and approval from the city, so there would be a second look at that new operator by the city if they were to come in.
And they would obviously have to, at that point, adhere to the same conditions that are within the current CUP?
That's correct.
Is, is there a way to add a condition that, that if this business were to dissolve for any reason, that any massage alternative that came in would have to come back for a reapproval of a CUP? Is that, could that?
Generally, the CUP will attach to the land, so basically it runs.
But if it's in the condition?
Yeah, I don't think you can circumvent that reality by adding a condition to the contrary.
Well, that's not right.
Then just, then just a follow-on question to that. If for some reason there were any irregularities after the approval, after the regulatory, and it warranted a, I guess, a revocation, then, or bringing it back, I don't, does it come back to us, or is it, or is it revoked at the, at the regulatory level?
The, the CUP would be revoked by the Planning Commission. The regulatory approval, I believe, would initially be revoked by PD with an appeal up to council potentially.
All right. And then, then if that were, if that were to happen at the regulatory level, you have a, there, an issue or whatever, which results in a, a revi, I don't know what the property.
There would be a hearing to formally.
A formally hearing, and, and if it, if it were to stand and the CUP is revoked, then it's revoked in its entirety and that use at that property ceases. So, so if, I'm trying to get to the, if an individual or whatever violates whatever regulatory, and I'm not familiar with them, whatever the PD has or whatever has, and which results, let's just say in a suspension of a license, that might be the proper way, a suspension of a license or a revocation of a license, does that automatically trigger a review by the council, the commission, and then a, a revocation of the CUP? I mean, after all, we're, we're looking to her, you know, for, to the applicant, and we're relying to, a lot on the, on the letters of recommendation, the representations that we have in front of us. And should that, you know, go, go south, so to speak, with respect, let's just say, with the applicant and her license, not necessarily with, I guess, the business, you should have a viable business, but, you know, I'm a real estate broker. If I get in trouble with my license, I mean, I, I have a, you know, I don't, I'm still obligated on my lease, I'm.
Yeah. What I may propose is that you, you could consider tying the two together in the sense that you may want to add a condition to the CUP stating that if there's a revocation of the massage operator's permit, that that may serve as a basis for revocation of the CUP.
All right.
So that there's a parallel track there.
Right.
There's concerns about how this business operates.
Well, I like, I mean, it, like any, it's a personal service business and, and, you know, around the person that's here that is terrific and.
People can operate that differently.
Exactly. And so we'd like.
That's my concern.
All right.
Same as yours.
So maybe we beef up number 16 is the one that says if three or more substantial complaints within one-year period are received by the police department, whether inside or within close proximity, revocation proceedings would be initiated by the city. So maybe we either add another one or add to that one.
I think, I think we need to add the. I think, I think we need to add the language, if we approve this, if we approve this, we either have a, either have a 17 that somehow, if you want to come up with the wording, that links the parallel track, you know, we link the two together, the applicant together with the...
With the planning commission.
What you were just talking about.
Yeah.
So if you can think about that. So is there any further question regarding that?
I'm okay with that addition.
All right. So does somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion with the addition.
Okay. To approve?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any other comments, questions before we vote?
Before we vote, let's, let's get the condition in the record.
All right. Go ahead and if we could have the attorney give us a...
I guess what I would propose adding is a language reading, if at any time the operator's permit issued for this establishment under chapter 5.32 of the Los Alamos Municipal Code is revoked, a revocation, revocation proceedings as to the CUP will be initiated by the city.
All right.
The way you have the language you have with the operators, would it be better to put the applicant?
The massage establishment operator's permit is what is the title of the regulatory permit for the business itself.
All right. Starting from this, it's from the CP, MTC or whatever it is.
Would the operator's permit is the city's regulation. Are you asking that if her license?
No.
Actually, I was going to say, we're not tied to the applicant because the CUP does run with the land.
Right.
So if this operator runs in full compliance with law and decides to sell her business...
Well, she can do that, yes, no problem.
If another operator who's in full compliance with law, then it's right. So you don't tie it to the op, to the applicant for that reason.
For that, we're okay.
But I prefer somebody with the correct licensure.
Right.
That they have to use, that they can't just sell it to anybody.
Yeah, but, yeah, and anyone who would attempt to operate from that location necessarily would have to have the state licensure in order to have a city-issued operator's permit.
But we're clear that this, what we're adding here also pertains to if they run a file of our regulatory, that's what we're talking about.
Yes.
And then that would, would trigger, could trigger the revocation as well.
Of the sea, of the land entitlement, correct?
Yes, yes. Okay, all right.
I feel better about that.
All right. So with that...
Can we repeat that, what it is that you wanted to put as number 17 or 18?
This would be a new number 17. The building department condition numbered currently as 17 would switch to 18. And then similarly, condition 18 would now be 19.
Okay. So with that, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None? Okay. The project is approved and so...
Congrats.
Congratulations and...
Make us proud.
Good luck. Good luck. Thank you. All right, moving on.
We'll be having a slight change of the guard here.
Oh, okay.
Now, so...
Thanks, Michael.
Pinch hitter. Designated runner.
All right, we're moving on to, okay, moving on to item 9C. This is a consideration of a four-unit residential condominium development and application for tentative parcel map conditional use permit and site plan review for 3751 through 3755 Farquhar Avenue. Do we have a staff report, please?
Chair DeBolt and members of the planning commission. The applicant is Allison Stapakis and Olympia Stapakis, and their representative is Nick Zampa Kellis in the audience. And originally, this was to demolish two existing homes and construct five condominium units. It's now a four condominium unit project. It does meet the height requirements in note 11 of table 2-03 of the municipal code, 1708030. And the four units will be located in three buildings. The units range in size from 1,700 to 1,900, basically square feet. All four units would be three bedrooms and two bath, two and a half baths. And building A will be two stories in height. Buildings B and C will be three stories in height. The project will have 10 parking spaces. Eight will be in garages and two will be open spaces. This was originally required to have a tentative tract map when it had five units. Now that it's less than five units, it's tentative parcel map, so basically it's a change in name and that type of discretionary approval. And so it is called a tentative parcel map. And staff supports approval of this conditional use permit, 1608. Site plan review, 1609. Tendative parcel map, 1801, due to an improved layout of the project that meets the standards of the zoning code. And let me, this is the materials board here, if anyone would like to see that. That is the new style of the architecture for the building. It's, it's a little bit of a difference from what was shown before. So it's back to you.
Do we have any questions of staff at this time? I have one. With respect to the current project, is there, is there anything that you're aware of that is not compliant with the development standards? Certainly have.
No. There is not. Yeah. And boy, I have measured this thing right and left.
Twelve times.
I like the strength of the answer.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Any questions of staff by anyone? I have one other one, one last one. Having to do with the, I'll call it a condition, that the grass clipping, they're going to have two carts on the trash, one for the recycles, one for the...
Right.
Regular trash. Okay, no problem with that. I'm interested, I'm interested in the, the condition, we're going to, I'm assuming we're going to condition, the requirement that the, any grass clippings and any, any of that that will be removed by the gardener or by the, by anybody, the, whatever, and taken away from the site.
Uh...
Do we have that in as a condition?
I don't think, no, we don't.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll just ask the question, and this will be for the attorney too. I like that. And I, I'm thinking ahead to larger projects where we're going to bump up against the mandatory recycling of green waste and that type of a thing. And to avoid on larger projects, you know, there, maybe to avoid having to have a, quote, "green waste bin," if we are going to be allowed, something to think about in the future, be allowed to condition that in lieu of a specific green waste bin, we, you know, if they have arrangements and they can demonstrate that, that it's being removed by their gardeners or whatever, then it's a way to kind of avoid the requirement for additional bins and stuff like that that people would have to pay for, because the green waste applies only, at least from my understanding, for the apartments and multifamily, apply only to the grass clippings and trimmings and stuff like that. It is not the garbage out of the, you know, the, the dirty stuff that, that is generated. So I'm just, this is, I like it, I just want to be thinking ahead, if we, if we maybe set up a condition that is, I'll, I'll call it a precedent, that maybe we can then apply going forward with larger units and stuff like that. I, I don't know if that's appropriate for this, is it, but I, go ahead.
It's something that we can certainly note, and then as long as the circumstances allow, staff can consider that and then present it to the commission.
Right. Okay, great. Okay. Any other questions of staff? Okay, I'll open the public hearing and have the applicant, if they'd like to come up and talk about your project.
I'd be happy to. Good evening, planning commission, Mr. Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, sorry. Thank you for letting me speak tonight again on this project. I wanted to have my architect here tonight, but unfortunately, his mother just got out of the hospital from having a stroke, so he can't make it. And, but I'm here and I have my, my wife, the applicant, here for moral support, and she may speak. As you know, we redesigned the project completely, really, from the last time you guys saw it. I shouldn't say completely, the la, the back two buildings are very similar to, to the configuration you'd seen before, with the difference that we've made it now less contemporary, modern, and we've gone a little more traditional. I think I'm going to call it transitional craftsman or contemporary craftsman. What we've added on the siding is, it's not lap siding, it's almost like a siding with grooves in it. And we put some stone on the front elevation on the front unit, and we've tricked it up with some shutters and show some roof line. Excuse me, Tom, do you, do you get email in here?
No, I don't.
Okay. Oh, I have a presentation, I tried to get it on a, on a thumb drive, but I can't, so I could walk around with my iPad and show you guys, but it's not that critical. So on this elevation, I'd just like to note, this is the front building, it's two-story, and the maximum height is, at this point, is 26 foot, I think it's three inches from top of curb, so it's quite a bit below the 30-foot height limit. And from our grade, what we're going to do is about 24 foot nine, if I can read it right. So it's, it's pretty low, it's going to be pretty unobtrusive.
You're simply going to the point here so that way you can...
State the money.
Yeah, sorry. You can say, actually, you want to come forward, but the commission can still look at the existence.
Oh, yeah, so sorry. Yeah, no problem. What do I do next here?
It's the red button, the one to red line. And then it...
Oh, cool.
There you go.
Okay, so this part of the elevation here, which is where the front door is, is actually at the, if I'm not mistaken, this is at the 20-foot setback. And then this part of the building here is two feet further back than that. This plane here is two feet back. This plane here is six feet back from this, which makes it four feet back from the rest of the elevation. So we've got a good bit of, good bit of articulation. And as far as even being in the, from the front setback, it's going to look pretty far back because we're more than 20 feet back from the front setback for most of the building, which will further reduce the massing, gives a little bit more front yard, a little more room for landscaping. Frankly, we just, since we went to four units, we just didn't need the square footage on this unit. It's, it's a nice unit, as it is now, with just two-story. We worked with, with, with staff, Mr. Oliver, a few times on some iterations, and he noted a couple places where we had some larger hallways and an area outside of a laundry room that could have been construed as a, a room, but even though it was a hallway. So we redesigned again, eliminated those spaces and made, made some other adjustments. One of the bedrooms in the, in the plan got a bigger walk-in closet, another one, the laundry room got bigger. So we wanted to avoid any, any controversies, if you will, on the design. So this is where we ended up. We're, I think we're pretty proud of it. It's, it's a, it's a nice-looking building in the front. The back buildings have some other similar design elements with the siding and the, and the shutters and the foam around the windows and things like that. We, the color board, I tried to include all the materials as best I could. There is one error on the elevation drawings for the plan two, two R and three, the color of the wrought iron railing and the French door was called out from the older design, which was the modern design. So I, I have a markup on it, I can email it to Tom, but it's just the, the paint color. It's, on this color board, it's correct. The listing of the colors is correct on the color board. So you can get an idea there. So the other things that we, we did address is, in our past meetings, we had, some of our big concerns was the covered parking. Obviously, all the, all the units now have two covered spaces, and there's two guest spaces in the alley. The two-story or 30 feet elevation within 100 feet of R1, that's solved. We've gone to less density, obviously, with the four units on the lot. All the trash, as Mr. DeBolt mentioned, is in the garages. Incidentally, with the new California code, it's almost impossible to plant grass and meet the landscape codes for low watering and whatnot. So grass clippings, probably in most future designs, may not happen. But I, I agree with you, you should have some kind of stipulation. Another way to handle it is if, if, if you, if the trash company is seeing, if Consolidated is seeing grass clippings and green waste and, and trash cans are recycled, I guess they could say something. But we're not opposed to having some kind of, something in the CCNRs. We also made a special effort to get the trash outside of the 20 by 20 space of the garage, so there'd be plenty of room to park. We have plenty of storage. The, there was another concern raised by our, our neighbor regarding the, the siding of the project. We looked carefully at if, what would happen if we reversed the project on the site plan, and that would then have put all of our kitchens and bedrooms more so facing west, which would actually reduce their privacy. So the way it is now, our west, our western elevations of all the buildings are really where all the stairs are or a laundry room or a powder room, so there's really no bedroom windows, no, no kitchen windows or dining room windows or anything like that facing to the west for that property that could have been impacted. Additionally, we're, we're a good bit lower than that, than that property next door. So I don't think there's going to be any privacy issues. The other thing we have is on the, on the roof, we put ahead and put our condensers and air conditioners on the roof, and they're in a little bay on the roof, where on the east, west and inside walls are stucco walls. And then the, where the roof slopes down, there's, there'll be a little fence, you can see it on...
You hit the right...
The other elevations.
The right button.
Oh, I'm in control, cool.
Keep going.
Yeah. So if you see that, plan three, it says north elevation. So on the east and west side, it's roof line and the air conditioner is down inside that well where that little fence is, right there. So noise going east and west is going to be blocked by that, that stucco wall and the roof line. And then the, the little privacy fence will of course block the view of the air conditioner. Additionally, with the new air conditioner units, they're all mandated to be, I think it's 16-seer or 14-seer, very high efficiency, so they've gotten a lot quieter than they've ever been. So I don't think that's going to be the issue. So that's kind of a nice feature, and plus getting them up off of the, off of the ground, those, we don't have to worry about screening them with plant materials or anything like that. So they'll be pretty unobtrusive. Tom also had a comment about where we're going to put our direction I have to go now. Our, make sure we don't have utilities coming in along the driveway here. So we, we designated on the plan, I don't know if, can't really see it on here, but we designated on the plan to show where we intend to bring the utilities in, so there's going to be no pipes or anything exposed on the side of the building here to make it nice and clean for people driving by and whatever. So that's another thing we discussed with Tom over the counter. I don't know what else. If you guys have any other specific questions, I'm happy to answer them for you. If not, then I'll ask my wife to come up and...
Any questions?
Say her piece. She's really shy, though, so cut her some slack.
All right. Any questions? Okay. Have no questions. Okay, so I'll, I'll open it for public comment now, so if you want to come up, go ahead and come up, and then anybody else wishing to address the item can come up after that.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Allison Stapakis. I am the applicant, along with my husband and my mother. I don't usually come and speak at these things, but I thought you could put a, a face to a name and know that I, I am involved in, we've done three or four projects here in Los Alamos. I was born and raised here. I've had, owned several homes and moved around in Los Alamos area. My business, I'm a dentist, my business was moved here about eight years ago. Most of my patients are from this area, and I'm a very proud member of this community. We typically try to do a nice project that we can be proud of. We will typically, all the finishes will typically put more than we need to, and whether we sell or we are going to be renting these, usually you're going to get some nice quality people who are going to buy and live in this community and add to it. In fact, I was thinking back to some other projects, and I was counting the number of owners who bought in this area and bought those projects that we built, and we still know probably one project, half of those people. There are... There are, and I, and I thought, they're all professionals. One's a dentist, one's an engineer, another one is, and they've become friends of ours. Another one is a, an administrator for the city of Cypress. So, hopefully you will, we will think this is a nice project, you will approve it. We are always proud of what we try to do. My husband is a, an engineer by heart, by training. He likes to build things that last and, and don't cause problems in the future. That's just his way. So, hopefully this is something that you will be proud to have in your, in your city too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Bryce Ricks, said neighbor. Just a few things. This plan is a vast improvement of what's been presented before you. They took care of a lot of the issues we had, and since it meets all the requirements, like, I mean, overall support, support of it, it will improve greatly upon what's there already, and be an asset, I think, to our neighborhood in the long run. I would ask the commission to use this as sort of a, a case study for future projects in regards to a project like this not having a trash bin in the alley, a dedicated, you know, large service thing. It just seems odd to me that they won't require this, that people that are by these things are gonna have to tow their own laundry, their own trash out in big bins. And you can go by our alley tonight, you'll see bins everywhere in the alley. I think if other rules need to be relaxed or relooked at to make sure that that can happen, I would expect for you to look at those options and do it. And also, the parallel parking, it, it's not, it takes up more space than normal backend, it causes more traffic, and people don't really look when they're parallel, they just go. So I feel like there can be some issues there. But, other than that, is since it fits all the codes now, I really don't have anything to complain about, and I look forward to new neighbors, and hopefully they're as nice as people as they said they are. And I thank you guys for your time.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and then close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion and comments. Victor? Any question?
Nothing, nothing this time.
Okay, Larry?
Definitely impressed with, well, impressed with the, the new design. Certainly bringing it from five to four is spectacular. But also, a, a shout-out to staff, because I know you guys actually worked really hard with the applicant to, to make sure that what came back to us was what we, we had asked for, and I, and I know that took a lot. So, great communication, I, I think, with you guys, and it, it looks like it paid off really well, so, to both of you guys, thank you.
I, I, I too echo Commissioner Andre's remarks. I mean, I, I have zero notes. I'm not kidding you. I mean, I go through, I go, it is a, yeah, it is kinda... Yeah, yeah, I mean, they're flying out there.
Well, and with all due respect, I think it was, it was clear, because what we said the last time was, come back with something that we don't have to say, "Yeah, but."
Right.
And, and that's really, it looks to me like what was actually truly accomplished on, on this, so...
And, and with respect, to Betty left, with respect to the trash bin, you know, on four units, that's, you know, that's, the bins are not required. You know, they can go, the carts or, or whatever. And, but once we get past that, then we're looking at the bins, and that's why I'm, I'm mentioning about that, about...
The clipping.
Having the clippings hauled off, so that, that doesn't create another, I'm running into this in Cypress, where it's, their trash haulers wanting to get into more bins, even though they have a MRF facility and they're sorting anyway, they now wanna start adding, adding to the revenue stream. Anyway, so, I, I like...
I am actually intrigued with the air conditioning being up there, so I just wanted to know if, when it's done being built, would somebody let me know? I'd like to come and look at it. I'm just curious. I think that's fascinating. That's something I wanted to do to my house.
We can talk about that, I have one in my house. So anyway, okay, so...
And I thank you for taking out some plants, so that I would make sure that kid doesn't get hit.
Okay, so would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
No other comments or questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, okay, motion carries.
Congratulations. It's very nice.
Okay.
Are you guys, I'm sorry, are you guys just launching the, the parking?
Yes, that's the next item. So, all right, so, next item.
Did we add the clipping thing to this?
Oh, I'm sorry. Do we need to?
No.
Or do we, no, I don't think we need...
Okay.
To add a, yeah, we wouldn't have to.
Okay.
But, well, I don't know, let me just, if you don't mind, let's revisit, let's just talk about that. Is it, would it be needed, I'm, I'm just thinking ahead for larger projects, or do we just...
Deal with it then?
Deal with it then, or...
Give the staff direction, the larger projects, we look at provisions for green waste disposal.
Yeah, apart from, you know, the trash hauler, we can incorporate it into the CCNRs where the association, you know, will have their garden or whatever. Okay, let's, let's leave it at that.
Okay, then moving on to the next item.
Sorry, I'm sorry, is it appropriate to put in the, the note about the color being wrong in those rails? I don't wanna get stuck where I have to come back and present a change.
It was, it was submitted on the color board, so we have...
Yeah, but that's, that's it, yeah.
Great. Before we move on, I just thought, before we move on to the next item, going back to the last item, the massage parlor, in the resolution, I think on the first page, it's, it talks about a foot massage. I think it's, in the resolution...
We have to reopen that, and the applicant has already left, so maybe it's just a comment?
Yeah, just a comment. Can we make, I just, I mean, may, we'll call it a typo, all right, 'cause I don't think we talked about foot massage anywhere. But in the resolution, under Section 1, second sentence, first word, 480-square-foot foot massage establishment?
A massage. Massage, take out the word foot.
Just eliminate the word foot.
Just tap in your head, huh?
Well, yeah, where's my mind? All right.
Next item, are we on D?
D.
D, okay. This is...
Oh, it's a square-foot massage establishment.
480 square foot.
Square foot. Oh! I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's a good one.
But we, well, we have one farther up, don't we? Yeah.
You do realize that's taped.
That's fine. My mind was racing ahead of my eyes, or my eyes were racing ahead of my mind, let's put it that way. Okay, okay, now we're on to item 9D, various off-street parking and loading amendments. I guess we'll have a staff report quickly on that.
Kendra will introduce this one.
Thank you. So, a couple of months ago, as I'm sure you all recall, we went, we continued on our discussion of potential changes to the zoning code regarding parking for R2 and R3 zones. And in Attachment 1, you have the, you have the proposed changes that the commissioners directed me to prepare at the, the last time that we convened and discussed this agenda item. So, I think the first thing to do would be to have, to address any questions you might have, or if you have continued changes, now that you can see it laid out as we discussed, might have made things a little bit more clear.
Shall we just, that's a question, so shall we, has anybody gone through and marked up their sheet with any changes in the red line?
I just looked at changes that were proposed.
Other than me. I just had a couple of markups on section, there's no page numbers, okay, so it's under Section 17.26.07580, Development Standards for Residential Open Space Parking Stalls. Just a, the, the 1, 2, 3, under A, 1, 2, 3, the fourth sentence that begins with "The width of parking spaces and aisles and minimum dimensions shall be provided," should, isn't the width part of the minimum dimensions?
Yes, and we can just say, the dimensions of parking spaces and aisles.
Yeah, I, I just, and then, we, we talk about parking spaces, and then, but we, in the, in the table, we refer to stalls. I'm just wondering if we should, do we need to have some continuity there?
Continuity would be...
Either, either, the width of parking stalls, because we, we talk about stalls in the title.
So the table uses both.
Right.
And we can correct them to be either, I don't know if staff has a preference, or if there's a reason to call them different things.
Yeah, definitely space.
Park is saying space.
Okay, so we just need to update everything to change space to stall.
No, stall to space.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Think that was it, I think. Let me just flip through it. Oh, on the, in the last, the very, the second to the last page, Item 6, Parking, Off-Street Parking Requirements Shall Be Provided For in Compliance With Chapter 17.26. Okay, if you go across the pa, go to the next page, number 4, this is now talking about what's gonna be included in the Covenant's Conditions and Restrictions. And, and we go down to number 4, it says, "Provision stating that each individual unit owner is entitled to two specific covered enclosed spaces equipped with functioning." I think, I think we talked about that, maybe having, we can leave it there, but maybe move the same language over into 6, so that people don't go to, they, they go, in their review, they, they say, "Oh, we gotta go to 17.26," and they're not required to have two, they're required to have one covered and one open. But yet, for condos, we require two covered. Follow?
So you're saying that in number 6, that we should add a, either included, including in 6, we should include the language of number 4 on the next page. You can leave number 4 as it is, so it probably needs to be in the CCNRs as well. But when it comes to the parking, you know, they're looking, whoever's reading this, they're gonna read down and they're gonna see parking, and they're gonna immediately get referred to Chapter 17.26.
Okay, unless we include in 17.26 a provision, except for condominiums, which shall have this, or you put it here, you follow, I'm just...
Right, so, I think that it would, I think it makes more sense to include that in 17.26 and not duplicate it everywhere, and then just refer back to the, the one time. I think that the part about the CCNRs was specific to the garage door openers, which already is included in 17.26, and, I mean, we included that for both R2 and R3.
Yeah, no, no, that, that's fine, I'm just talking about, it's the covered, it's two covered, they, they've been, they will be entitled to two specific covered enclosed parking spaces, in other words, two garages. And whereas, if you go into 17, I don't have the code, if you go to 17.26, in the multifamily, we only require one covered space per unit, and, except for condos, condos are, shall have two.
Right.
Okay.
Page 417.
I'm looking at the...
Oh, I'm sorry, 47, oh, I see it, okay. Here we go.
Yeah, 060A3, and the R3, "One of the required parking spaces for each dwelling unit shall be located in an enclosed garage." Okay, I guess, somewhere in 17.26, if we wanna talk about condominiums in here...
We didn't get to a different, a distinction, I know that it came up, but I don't think there was any consensus reached about condominiums versus apartments the last time we discussed this. So I think that was still something to be, I think that was still something to be discussed, because I thought that one of the points was, what if someone rents their condominium just like an apartment, and, and there wasn't something that we circled back to.
No, but I thought that's why we put in number 4, the second to the last item, was to cover that. And I agree with you, Art, I think it does, 'cause if you say, refer to 17.26, it's gonna go the other residential, not the condominium.
So we, I mean, we can certainly change it to be the same language.
I think, I think it should be in, you can refer to 17.26, because there're, there's, there may be other, without having to reread it all again, 'cause I can't remember, there may be other requirements for parking, other than the two covered spaces. So, I, I just think for clarity, if whoever's reading this, this needs to be, that the requirement of two specific covered enclosed parking spaces should be either included in Item 6.
Number 6.
In 6. I think that's the easiest, because you're talking about, you're in the condo section, so I think you're there.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, okay, and then, so that was my, that was my thought there.
Actually, Chairman, if I can?
Go ahead.
May also just want to add, in 20, 17260603, an additional sentence, say, "However, condominiums shall provide two enclosed spaces as, as indicated in..."
And send it back, send them back.
Right, because if somebody's looking at this code, they would be able to just kind of know off the bat, without having to flip through three different sections, to find out what the condominium sections are.
And then it should also be, it should probably be in both of these two.
So that, somebody's...
Right. So we should add it to, to both. 17.26.060A2 and 3.
Right, okay. All right, so we're gonna add, okay, it'll go into the same section, 17060, right, okay, good, that's fine.
But then, do you want it in 6 also, if we're saying specifically for condominiums in A2 and 3, then you're still just referring them back to, it would be the same standard?
Yeah, you're referring, yes, you're referring, yeah, you're referring, you can refer them back, and you can refer them forward.
Exactly.
Okay.
So I'm, that's my only comments on that, on this red line version. Shall we dispense with that, and then go, if you wanna go just a little bit further? Would that be the proper at this point?
Yes, as long as those are the only comments, then...
With respect to what you've submitted.
Right, and I'll make those changes, and then we'll just continue to add to this document.
Need a motion, or just, or you just, you're there, disdirection to go ahead and find what's that?
Well, we need to close the...
Open, close the public hearing?
Okay, we'll close the public hearing, and bring it back here, okay? To the commission, okay, so we're all in agreement? To the commission, okay, so we're all in agreement.
Yes.
I have one other, with respect to condominiums, and this is with respect to condo conversion and parking. I'm not really prepared on this, but, maybe, okay, so I'll just go from memory, and I know I'm, I know it may not be right, but with we require we require these parking standards on new construction where obviously it is, they're building, they, they can design to fit our code, which is what they should be doing, okay? We have another section that allows for condominium conversions, okay, and the parking for condominium conversions on project, these are projects that are already built. In most cases, there, there is no new land, all the spaces are taken, even, even under our, you know, they were, could have been built under, they were built under our prior codes where they don't meet the current parking requirement. Yet, on a conversion, we require that they, they have, they have to provide an additional space. Do you have that kind of conversion?
The specific one for conversion of residential dwellings and condominiums is in chapter sixteen nineteen.
Sixteen?
Sixteen what?
Nineteen.
Nineteen, thank you.
Yeah, I think he's talking about seventeen thirty
So there's standards?
Seventeen thirty-four oh five oh. Are there things in sixteen too?
Okay, so if you go to page four eighty-five, we can talk about where you, I think four eighty-five will have it. For four eighty, four eighty-five, page four eighty-five, you go to six B. And it talks about, or actually in A. Construction before, in A, it says before January twenty-three eighty, structures approved may be converted when minimum off-street parking is provided at a rate of two parking spaces within a garage or carport. Shall provide each condominium unit, an additional open parking space for all guests shall be provided for each five condominium units or fraction thereof. And then for those after, and then going on into B, they go on and impose minimum off-street requirements at the rate of two spaces within a garage or a carport shall be provided and additional open spaces for guests shall be provided for each two condominiums, condominiums or fraction thereof. That's an impossibility, okay?
Right, but don't you remember when this all came up when we were doing the fifty units, because the conversion required guest parking and a new construction required no guest parking?
Exactly, exactly.
Which is crazy.
It was just crazy, right, so we fixed it for the new. Okay, we've got that all fixed. Now we have the condo conversions, okay, and which basically is an impossibility, because the units are already built. The garages and spaces are already there, they, they, they met the code at the time that they were built, before or after nineteen eighty. So it just seems to me why would be, this gets down to why does ownership, first, why does individual ownership change anything from a practical sense? Okay, you have, you have apartments that, that are currently occupied, the parking problems are the parking problems, they've been that way since the units were built until today and they will remain that way until those, until they finally burn down, or are torn down, or whatever, or repurposed, at which point they would then have to meet all the current codes, right? So it just seems to me that if we want to foster condo conversions, and if we want to foster, this is the idea of maybe making taking a transient area and turning it into a more permanent population, you know, with ownership. They're already living there, they already have their space and, and it's all worked out, why not just eliminate it and allow them to become a homeowner rather than become a renter? We gain, we, we lose nothing by just changing how the, how the how, for, for a status changing from that of a renter to an owner, we, we lose nothing. As a city, we gain immensely, because as each individual unit sell, assuming the title and all that can be set up and assume, you know, all the other variables that are in there, your property taxes will quadruple. Talk about a revenue stream, you know, for the city, in that respect. You, you gain in having homeownership, which generally improves your policing and everything else, you, you, you attract people who can afford, be it the existing tenants or that come in, be less transient, and it's a way to I think enhance the city. This might be maybe, I don't know if this is out of our purview for these reasons, but I just see this with this, with these conditions in here, you might as well just eliminate the whole, you, you eliminate condo conversions altogether, we don't allow condo conversions, period, or you take a, a forward-looking, you know
Yeah, has, has there been anybody interested in, I mean, as long as I've been on here and haven't talked about it?
No, and it's, and it may be because of that, it's, it's difficult for them to do that. It's, it, the biggest obstacle is a personal private space, apartments aren't required that
Right.
In the same way that
But I think, I mean, that's a different discussion, we're talking parking tonight.
Yeah.
I'm just kind, I mean, this is something that I think, I've been kind of thinking about this over the last year or two, that that it, it's like, it's like, what, what do we care? What does anybody care, except that there's, there's nothing but upside? What, what prevents all of this happening and ever happening are, I'll just say government regulations, our regulations. If it's new, I, I have no problem with imposing every development standard on a new project, at all, I mean, keep their feet to the fire until we get what we want and it complies, and we did it and we got it on that last project, okay? But when it comes to something that's already built, you know, it, it would be great to add open space, but you can't, I mean, it was built under a different set of rules years ago, and, and they're non-conforming today legally, and, and they, they can never be converted if not for parking for these other, you need open space, you need this, you need that. I say, let's, all you're doing is changing the ownership, the, the method, or whatever you want to call it, that their status as a tenant to an owner, and it's complete upside for the city. Complete upside, I mean, for, for, for the people and for the corporate entity called the city, because the property taxes will will just quadruple. I mean, and if, if they get converted, they may not want to convert, but I mean, it's
I agree with you that, with the space that's there, you can't change, there, there is no place to add
Right.
Additional parking within existing, if it is what it is, when they do a conversion, they're not changing the structure, although I had heard at one point with condo conversions, there were some changes within the wall structures that had to be done for sound that, that is required from an apartment versus a condominium, and maybe that's another reason why
But think about that.
But you gotta address one, one at a time.
Yeah, but to think about that, too, think about that, too.
So, so, sorry, just, just something to note, we can certainly continue to discuss this within the parking realm.
Okay.
But other aspects of it, we'd have to bring back and agendize.
Okay, but let's, okay, let's cut it off then, let's just, just cut it off.
I was still talking about parking, but I agree with you, there are different things.
But there's a whole host of, that I don't even know about, and that, and that could be part of it, that we probably should discuss at a, at a, at a second meeting. And, because I, I think, I think it's worthy of exploring, and as, I mean, I know it's into parking, but we're also looking at zone, who's on this committee with me? We have this other zoning update committee that I think if you want, I, I would like to bring that forward, okay, this idea of, of condo conversion.
So if, if you have something specific to parking that you'd like to propose only, we could do that in this discussion, but otherwise, we should move on to other parking things.
Okay.
And then, and
Yeah.
Agendize that for another
Right, well, if we're gonna talk about parking, with respect to condo conversions, I would say that we, we have, we eliminate all, all additional parking requirements beyond that, which is already, that already exists. And maybe with a caveat that, that upon inspection, if there is this, you know, you know, maybe on an individual basis, if there is room for additional parking, you know, based on a, a physical inspection by, you know, city staff or something with an application, that, that can be recommended or could be required then as a, as a condition, provided it's there. In other words, you can't, you know, maybe they got a, you know, without damaging the integrity of the you know, I, I can think of several properties that might have the room, but if you put, if you put a garage, if you put an extra garage in there, you just destroyed, you know, a bunch of your open space, and, you know, it's a balance between parking, you know, yeah, right. I mean, just something to work something out. You got the gist. Okay, so, okay, so I think that's where we're at, we're done.
Let me get mine in.
What's the next one?
Parking.
Oh, nine E, I'm sorry.
The next, the next item would be to continue this discussion.
Kind of moved into that, didn't we? Okay, so moving on to nine E on our agenda. Find it. Okay, so this is a continued discussion, right?
Yes, we should open the public hearing for this portion of the discussion, even though no one's here, then you can
All right, well, I'll open the public hearing, this is for item E, and there's nobody here, so I guess I'll close the public hearing, right, and bring it back to us. And so here we are and on the second page, but we already addressed driveway width, aisle width on page two. Did we talk about tandem parking?
No.
I'm okay with the way it is, the tandem parking in our, in our code, that's where we can, they can allow, they can, they can have tandem parking, but they can't count
They can't count it as a space.
Toward their required parking. Okay, because, you know, you put one in, two in a garage, tandem, it's not, we can't give them credit for two two spaces, you know, they can use it if they like, but we can't count it, we can only count it as one, because you have to have access all the time, according to our code.
To the
To the second space. So you, if there's a car in the way, you don't have access. I don't that's my opinion on tandem parking. If that makes sense to anybody. You came up with the, the
The fifty units, right?
Fifty unit project.
Oh, did it?
They were trying to count tandem spaces.
Oh, that's right.
In
That's right.
Towards their requirement.
And driveway spaces as well.
Counting the driveway as a space in front of a garage.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Driveways are Yeah.
Yeah. It's still
Well, and that's, and that's technically with
And maybe, maybe that needs to be clarified.
Right, that's technically tandem, just because you have a garage door there.
Right.
They're still, they were trying to get by on the tandem parking.
Right.
Seventeen
Have a computer.
I think you're referring to seventeen twenty-six point zero three zero, part C, is, references tandem parking, but the only statement is tandem parking shall not be allowed for required parking, except for there's a mobile home park exception.
I think it works, it's key where there's required parking.
Right.
Seventeen twenty-six
I think it may be helpful, if you're, if it is allowed in some places, so it's not that you're saying it wouldn't be allowed, but just maybe tandem parking some way to say that tandem parking may be permitted in certain areas, but shall not be considered
You can't count towards your required spaces.
But I think we might need to spell out
We need to spell out
The driveway is considered tandem parking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can't count the driveway.
Seventeen two six, zero three zero?
Zero three zero C.
C.
So
Oh, there it is, right here. Well, they
For required parking.
What they were trying to, to get away with was the idea that you had the garage door there, I guess, and so
It's pretty clever.
You're in the garage and then you have enough, you can park on the, the driveway.
And count as a space.
And then count the driveway space or, you know, as a, as a space, so
I, I mean, I think it's, I think it still falls under tandem parking, whether there's a garage door there or not.
I like the idea that we add clarification that space in a driveway behind a garage is still considered tandem parking.
That's fine.
That could go in the definitions part, too.
We should, we could add a definition.
The definition of, we don't have one.
It doesn't look like there's a definition now.
Oh, yeah, there's.
So add a definition.
Is a, is a space in a driveway considered a space?
See, there's certain circumstances where it is, like, for instance, if someone runs a nursery school out of their house or something like that, then, or a babysitting service, then they, we count those as spaces.
So then if you make this change, they can't run that business
Right, they can't run that business anymore, yeah.
Right?
Because they have to have a certain amount of parking for that, and we've been counting the driveway spaces for that. Because the person who's babysitting will be home, they, they might be parked in their garage, but the, the visitors will come and park in the, in the driveway, they're not gonna go in the garage, because they don't have a
I think we need to be a little careful about that.
Would you say you can't be contest parking for development standards?
Yeah.
Right, but would be considered for businesses?
Right, well, we could leave it silent to that.
Leave it silent?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think we need to be careful.
For purposes of
Development.
Development, development standards.
Yeah.
Site developments. All right. And then another one, yeah, was
Condominium requirement.
Oh, okay, we were just talking about that, condominium requirement, is ownership different? I guess we can talk a little bit about that.
In regards to parking.
In regards to in regards to parking, I guess, right?
Yeah. You keep trying.
I thought we just did, yeah.
Yeah, well, we kind of, we kind of dealt with that.
Yeah.
I, I think, I don't think it is different. I mean, it is, no, I don't
This, this
This says condominium, we're talking condominium conversion, so I think, I think with, with
But I think this was kind of to deal with apartment versus condominium, is it different because people own it?
And, you know, with condos, two covered spaces.
Right.
Apartments, one.
Right.
Right.
Well, condominium
I would say, I would say that, I would say that it is, I think it, again, it goes to ownership and to a sense of permanency and that type of a thing, right, so I say
I think some of it, too, with, with respect to what the current code, you just said that the condominiums require two spaces, apartments require one.
Right.
And maybe the theory initially behind that was that when you have a condominium, you anticipate, this is total generalization, but in general, you might have a family in there that potentially could have more vehicles than maybe an apartment, where you might have maybe not as many, it depends on the size and everything else.
But we changed the parking now for one bedroom, it's two.
Correct, on apart, on apartments, right, but, but I think that's where that maybe may have initially come from, why why would you have only one on an apartment versus two on a condo, unless you're just assuming that more people are living inside of each individual condo?
It may also have to do with an R one home, a free, you know, a regular single-family home, the requirement we have there are two, are two kind of spaces. And basically we think, we think of a condominium as a single-family dwelling.
Right.
Even though it is in a multifamily complex, you know, it is a
Right.
You know, an individual, you know, it has to be, it's not zoned R1, because it's not, you know, freestanding and doesn't have common, you know, that type of the thing. So we have to go multifamily, because we have common areas and all that stuff. So it might be more that way. So, I think there is a distinction between condo, and so, yes, ownership, I think, makes the difference. And of course, when we get into conversions, we're gonna flip that, kind of, because.
Yeah, but that's a different, that's a different reason.
But not really.
That's a different reason.
It's a different reason.
Because you just don't have.
Okay, and then, R3 versus R2, should they be different or the same?
Are we looking to clarify, I mean, are we, are we?
Well, you kind of have covered it.
I think we've kept it all the same, yes.
Yes, the changes you may have.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm good with that.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, kind of a concept from the beginning, but.
It's got, it just was cleaned up. Okay.
But if we could, I'd like to expand our next discussion, unless this is stepping on the zoning committee.
Your zoning.
I don't know if we are, if we look, are we looking at condo conversion beyond parking? Because this is the scope of, parking was the scope of this.
Actually, we have talked, we met with our zoning code consultants this week, and we kind of laid out a plan for the next three TAC meetings. The next one coming up on June 11th, we're gonna be talking about signs. The fourth one was, I forget the fourth, but fifth, we're gonna talk about residential issues.
Right.
So that would be an opportunity that we could talk about condo conversions. One of the other things we talked about was the massing for single-family homes in, and TAC number five. So we can add the discussion about zoning, condo conversions at that one.
I think that's a.
Because that's kind of the all-encompassing residential one, so.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, so I think, so I guess we, in the parking, I don't, I didn't bring my book.
Yeah, I didn't either.
So we, we went after the, did you bring yours?
No, I forgot it.
Okay. We've just gone through the multifamily zone, are we to be looking at any other zones with the parking?
You can look at any, any parking issues you'd like to look at.
Okay, I don't have, well, why don't we take a look at our books?
Yeah.
And then, when we come back to the next meeting.
We should all produce a, together, kind of a compilation of the zoning code and everything that they've looked at along the way, so I think we're just.
We have a separate book, none of us.
Oh, is that it?
This is how prepared we are.
Is this the one you want?
Oh, yes.
All the other. Yeah, I tried to tell you.
Okay.
We were busy.
Is this just for, I was just trying to see, was it limited only to the multifamily? Or is it for the entire?
I think that that was where we started, because there was an identified need, but it was parking in general.
Single family can be discussed, too.
I think we're, we don't have any issues in that arena, do we? Or have we? You guys have?
We, other than we, I think we've required it where they have to bring up the garage to code when they expand their house. So if it's, if it's too small of a garage, or it's only a one-car garage, it has to become a two-car, four-hundred-square-foot garage. And that's, that's the way we've been interpreting it. I'm not, I can't remember whether it's.
Why don't we bring that up? Let's, let's take a look at.
Yeah.
Let's take a look.
At the next meeting.
Okay.
The next, okay.
Let's look at the R1. So if we could all maybe review the R1 parking standards for our next meeting.
And if I could suggest, too, while you're at it, look at ADUs and their effect on it, too.
All right.
Yeah, because that, that makes a.
Right.
Quite a change.
It does, okay. All right?
And I guess also beforehand, if you have questions in the interim, specific to the ADUs, I, I would say, and you can correct me if you feel differently, but please feel free to reach out to any of us to talk about it ahead of time, because I'd hate for you to bring back a bunch of proposed changes for ADUs that we're not allowed to make, because there's, there are a lot of state requirements now that confine the city.
Maybe if we could get that, maybe get that in the packet, just what the current state is. You know, I mean, to be honest with you, I review these, I review the stuff when I get the packet, and, and maybe if we could just get the packet a day earlier, if possible. I mean, I know you have publication, we don't have anything, you know, but if we could get it, we're getting it Thursday, I think, which is probably plenty of time, we have the weekend.
Or.
You get them Wednesday.
Yeah, if we're getting them Wednesday, that's perfect. I mean.
Yeah.
Gives us time. And then, if we review what you have there, then we can compare it to our code, and then we can start making notes, and we can talk about it when we get in here.
Okay.
Because I'm probably not gonna open the step up until.
That's fine, I just wanna avoid anyone taking the trouble to.
Yeah, we can change ADU, but we can.
Disappoint it that we can't make the changes.
Yeah. Just keep that in mind, in light of the R1, that you're not able to change that, so what you're requiring may be for not on a lot of AD.
Well, I think we should, I just, I have, I have no problem being, I'll say fairly rigid with new development, because this is our, this is like the only chance you get to impose all the, you know, to impose the development standards. That's, that's, you know, so, this isn't where you give it away. But when it comes into the, like, into the remodels, and if we're gonna get into that, where, you know, it's easy to say we're gonna bring, we want to bring this up to code. Well, it looks good on paper, but the reality of trying to do it, you know, is a lot more costly, you know, on an existing structure, where you can't access, you know, what you need to upgrade in order to comply with the current code, and that type of a thing. So I think that's where we, if we're gonna give, that's where we give, without, you know, within reason, I guess, but, you know. Okay. Okay, so then, moving on, I guess we've kicked that one to death. Item 10, staff reports, do we have any staff reports?
Yes.
Nothing? Okay. Items from the development director?
It's a couple of things. As I indicated, our next, the next TAC meeting will be June 11th, Monday, and at that meeting, we are gonna focus on signs. So if any of the commissioners have any thoughts on signs, feel free to get me those. Any, any issues, ideas, thoughts you have on signs, we'll be talking about those. I'm gonna reach out to the Chamber of Commerce and Association of Realtors as well, to see if they have any input into our existing sign ordinance and any recommendations they may have. The hotel project on Los Alamos Boulevard is moving forward, grading's taken place, all the fees have been paid, permits are probably gonna be pulled in the next day or two. Groundbreaking ceremony was scheduled, and that has been pushed back, because the site was just not ready to have people on, on site yet. So, we don't have a date for that yet.
They removed all the snakes.
What's that?
They removed all the snakes.
Yeah.
Wahoos is also ready to be issued, that permit's ready to go, so you should see construction commencing there shortly. And.
Olson, they're tearing down.
Yeah.
The church, as you may have seen.
Right, right.
And then, our CDBG project on Cerritos is happening right now.
Is that the street that's blocked off? Or the lane?
Oh, yeah.
Yes. I caught office spring today, I always go to Catala, and I got off to spring, because I went to El Boyloco to pick up dinner. And I was like, oh! The street's closed.
Yeah, it's gonna make a major improvement to that sidewalk.
How long is that gonna be?
Uh, Friday is when it'll be done.
Okay.
Yeah.
You also may have heard that Monday night, the city council voted to revert Los Alamos Boulevard from Cerritos to Catala, back to two lanes.
Yeah.
So that will be happening here shortly.
You're ready for the track.
Why?
That's, that's everything I have.
The signage, going back, you'll probably remember, I hope, but we, the commission did put together recommendations sometime back, oh my gosh, I want to say seven, eight years ago, maybe?
That was before me.
Yeah.
For what?
For signage, we did do a big discussion on that, so there is history about what our thoughts and recommendations were. Unfortunately, the city council didn't pass it.
Oh, I know which one you're talking about, for the window signage and stuff like that.
Windows and stuff like that, so there is some stuff, just doesn't apply.
Okay, oh, dig that out. Thank you.
Okay, any commissioner reports?
Yeah, I mentioned to the chair and to the director that I am not gonna be available for the next two meetings. It'll be June and July, so I don't know if that's gonna create a problem, I have prior commitments, so I wanted to put the commission and staff on notice, and if there's an issue, then I'll.
Not go.
No, I have to go.
You guys can decide what you want to do.
If there's an issue.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll just go ahead and take a look now at June and July, and make sure that I will be available, at least.
I have one question, and it happens to be about signs, the, like, window film stuff, because I know we've talked before about the Shoe City and their signs. That building on Farquhar and Catala, not Farquhar and Catala, Bloomfield and Catala that just got redone, where Dr. Poe is.
Yeah.
The building, the top floor that fronts Catala, all, there, I think there's like four big windows, they're all covered with film, like advertising Botox and.
I know which one you're talking about, yeah.
It just look, I mean, the building looks great.
Yeah.
I think the same people who did the Madera Shopping Center did that one, it's taking as long.
Yeah.
But it just looks tacky.
Yeah.
And that was some of the stuff we talked about.
Yes.
At that time.
And I didn't think we could have a hundred percent coverage of a window.
No, we can't, yeah.
Okay, any other?
That's it.
I have a couple, just a couple comments, and it's kind of a follow-on to Victor. We had, I mean, I was absent for the March meeting, okay, and then, my staff tried to reschedule for the next, you know, for a meeting.
That was April.
Or April, or April, it was April, okay. And then, unable to get a, I'll say a response from, are you available for a second meeting? And there was no, not that you weren't, people weren't available, they just didn't get a response.
Yes, I did.
Well, I'm just talking in general. Okay, so, I guess my question is, we're being communicated to via our city email. So, I want to make, I mean, I want to make sure that everybody, we all have iPhones, right?
No, well, you do, but it don't work.
Oh, okay. Well, I think if you don't have your city email set up.
That's where I usually check it on that.
Yeah, I get mine on, I don't, I don't, I don't look at home, okay? I have it on here. And I, and if I get an email, it, it pops up as an email, I mean, I have to switch, you know, whatever to get it. I just want to make sure everybody is set up that way. If you're not, then, or don't know how to do it, then, we need to do it, and then, if you don't know how, I guess, come into the city and the, somebody here who has.
And you know, when I set mine up, I get a text every time I get a Los Alamos email. Because I would never switch to it and look, I mean, I have another email on there that I never check, but I get a text, and that's what.
Oh, okay.
Every time an email comes in, otherwise I wouldn't know.
I have it set up, but I have to switch over, and sometimes I forget after a few days.
Well, mine, and I don't know, on mine, if I get an email, I just, it says I have four emails, I go to open it, you know, I, I default to my regular personal mail, right? It defaults to that, and I might go through three, and I go, where's the fourth one? And then I go, oh, maybe it's the city, and I punch.
The notification doesn't come up online.
Oh, okay.
It's there, I mean, the, the email is there, but the notification.
You don't get it on you, you don't get it, I get it on the screen.
I get it from my main email, I don't get it for the second email.
Okay, all right, so, maybe there's a way to, not that it's that, well, maybe it is that important, I mean, I, I don't, I don't just go to the city email to look, unless I get something, is when I open it, I don't, well, I don't use the cell.
Right, because it's like, you know, once every few weeks, something comes through.
Except now, it looks like they're sending them, I don't know, are you guys getting emails every day?
Yeah, I'm starting to get.
Yeah, but I backed out of, like, the biz now, I went and subscribed, I'm like, I was getting those every day.
Yeah, yeah. Somebody's got our email address.
Since we have, I know we have to use the city one, can you send it to the city one and copy our personal ones? Is that allowed, or?
I'm not aware of any city policy that would prohibit that.
It is my understanding from the city clerk that I have to send all correspondence to city-issued emails, I cannot go over a personal email.
Not even a copy?
No.
Maybe a copy.
We'll pull up on that.
In other words, to bow with him.
The only thing to be aware of with that, and this all, again, depends on whatever the council policy is, but.
Then if you respond from the personal one.
Right, it can't, the response has to come from the city-issued email, it can't be from the personal.
Well, that's fine, but at least we'd be alerted.
Even if you did respond on accident, then, by using your personal email as the, as an alternative, if there's a PRA, you might be required to search through your personal email and provide responsive records. I mean, it just creates, yeah.
Yeah, your personal emails become public.
Just let me get, figure, tell me how to get the text.
Yeah, yeah, so, I think it's important that we, we do that, that way, you know, we have people that apply businesses and stuff like that, and, you know, they're, you know, we, it take, it probably takes them long enough to get on our agenda to begin with, and then.
Right.
You know, we should try to do it. And I would say, and there are gonna be times when we don't have a quorum, I understand that, but I think we, I think I, I would feel comfortable in telling staff that if it looks like we're not gonna have a quorum, then immediately, we need to schedule a meeting, especially if we have businesses that are waiting.
Right.
If it's just stuff that we're working on, then, not a big deal.
Right.
You know, that way, but if we have people that are paying money, and they're on, are they're on the clock, let's, let's try to accommodate them, and if it means a special meeting, we have a special meeting, and we get it done.
We would need to know that a couple weeks in advance, before we send publication to the newspaper.
I know, but I, but.